We'll call this evening's meeting director. This is the regular city council meeting for Tuesday, October twenty first, twenty twenty five. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman Bembas.
Here.
Councilman Carter.
Here.
Mayor Proton Davy.
Here.
Mayor Gillis.
Here.
Councilwoman Harris.
Here. I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilwoman Meldrum and Councilman Starbuck.
Support. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Alright, can we have a moment of silent prayer? Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve this evening's agenda? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no presentations this evening, so we'll move right into public comment. Anybody who would like to speak before the council, please step up, you'll have five minutes to speak.
Good evening, Iden Tesh. My first question, I guess, or maybe clarification. At the last meeting, I believe that you stated that you were not going to be hiring an outside search company for the, to replace the city manager. And because of the cost, and that you were going to use the Michigan Municipal League, well, many of the city managers, I've spoken to other government employees, told me that in fact, there is a fee with the municipal, Michigan Municipal League. And so, this clearly states, the Michigan Municipal League charges money for city manager searches using a fee structure that's typically based on the annual salary of the position, though the total cost could vary depending on the scope of the services required. Additional costs may include advertising and background checks, and the league tries to minimize out-of-pocket expenses where possible. Primary fee, the standard fee for executive search, is typically around ten percent of the positions' annual salary, but it can be higher based on the search's complexity. So, I would just ask if you could post the contract that you signed? If there's a contract, some clarification, so people can see, the residents can see, what in fact you're contracting with the Michigan Municipal League as far as their services. That is my request, just posted on the website. And number two, I understand that there was a meeting last week, or maybe as early as yesterday, but with the Southwest Municipal Utility Authority, they call this water treatment agency. There was an estimate by the company that was hired to do the research for the repairs and the replacement, to bring the water treatment plant up to code specifications, bring it up to date, if you will. And so, I understand that that estimate was about twelve million dollars. Thirty-five percent was to be paid by Clay, thirty-five percent by IRA, and thirty percent by Algenack. Again, I don't have all the documentation or the receipts. Just wanted to know when you were going to address that, when it was going to become an issue, because obviously, it's going to be coming out of our pockets. And we already got the problem with the infrastructure. And I just wanted to take a moment and thank Jake Starbuck for taking responsibility for that banner. I will get with him, because I'm still looking into what I have heard, it hasn't been documented, that the fire department and/or DPW was out there hanging that banner that stopped the traffic where people were complaining. So, but kudos to Jake for taking responsibility and apologizing. Thank you.
If I could, real quick.
Yes.
Um, Mrs. Tesh, what we said at the last meeting regarding the MML was that we were going to post the application, or the job posting with the MML. We are not using them at the search for it. All we're doing is putting the job posting on the MML's website.
Okay.
Okay.
Because we used them if there was a fee.
Exactly, it was like fourteen.
What's that?
Alright.
Mayor Gillis?
Yes.
I would like to confirm that neither the fire department nor the DPW was involved in any way whatsoever with hanging of the banner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Is that called done?
Depends on it. Depends on what move it is.
I'm Rose Rumble. I'm on Canyon Road in Algenack. I've worked in community health centers for over thirty-five years, and I've worked alongside low-income families and their children. I am the owner of STEAM Health and Fitness Programs LLC, which I started in Grand Rapids in two thousand four. I managed health centers and in between management, went to school to become an asthma educator and an exercise instructor. My STEAM classes at that time were focused on overweight children with asthma. My goal was to give them an opportunity for a healthier life, doing so without expensive gyms or equipment. I've been teaching senior exercises in Algenack since two thousand fourteen, achieving that same goal. My focus is now on the great seniors of our county. You really don't know what humor is until you walk beside our seniors. I'm here tonight to request a meeting with you regarding a possible placement of my program in the new activities center. I thought I will never know if we would be a good fit for each other unless we talk about the nuts and bolts of what would mean for both of us. I have another meeting tonight, so I can't stay too long, but I surely would appreciate if you would make time to meet with me. And I thank you for this time and the opportunity for me to address you tonight.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Seeing none. City managers, oh, she didn't do one because she's phoning in and now she's because she's retiring. I'm just joking, no, she didn't do one, did she? She did one on the other one this evening. So, moving on to consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of the regular city council meetings of October seventh, twenty twenty five. Our departmental reports, we have light enforcement, building, DPW, finance, fire department, water department. Under communications and notices, we have the board's commission roster and the housing commission meetings. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the consenting agenda as presented.
Support.
Comments, questions, concerns? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no unfinished business, moving on to new business. Item eleven A is to adopt amendment to chapter forty-four utilities by adding article four storm water management. Keep our waterways clear, clean, EGO requires that the city of Algenack operate under municipal storm sewer system permit. This permit requires the city take steps to reduce pollution, prevent illegal dumping, and keep our storm sewer system working properly. The MS four permit requires that the city of Algenack implement a detailed storm water management ordinance. The city attorney has drafted attached ordinance with input from staff. These new rules will keep our community safe from flooding and to protect the same groundwater and surrounding waterways from pollution. What does the new ordinance do? Requires new construction and certain property changes to follow stormwater other design standards. Prohibits illegal discharges from entering storm drains. Ensures that storm water systems are properly maintained so they continue working long-term. Gives the city the right to inspect and act if there's a risk to health, safety, or the environment. What does this mean for residents and businesses? Everyday activities like lawn watering and washing vehicles at home are okay, as long as no pollutants or discharges. Developmental contractors must follow stormwater rules when building or renovating. Property owners must maintain their stormwater systems like drains, retentions, ponds, or swales. The city may issue warnings, require cleanups, or fined by others up to five hundred dollars per day. The goal is compliance and prevention, not punishment. City council approved the introduction of this ordinance at our last meeting on October seventh, twenty twenty five. Can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to adopt amendment to chapter forty-four utilities by adding article four storm water management.
Second. Comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, could I have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman Bembas.
Yes.
Councilman Carter.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davy.
Yes.
Mayor Gillis.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harris.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item eleven B is to adopt amendment to chapter thirty-three solid waste, article one in general, section one, polluting public spaces, subsection A to change violations of the ordinance from municipal civil infraction to misdemeanors by adding the subsection. Staff requested the city attorney draft the attached ordinance because of situations that have occurred recently within the community. This amendment updates the current city ordinance on littering and dumping. It is illegal to dump litter or dump trash, debris, or other waste on city streets, sidewalks, alleys, or public places. Commercial or industrial waste may not be discharged on the streets, sidewalks, alleys, or gutters at any time. Violations are now considered misdemeanors rather than civil infraction. This change strengthens enforcement and emphasizes how serious the city takes protecting our community spaces. This update is meant to keep Algenack clean, safe, and enjoyable. We approve this introduction at our last meeting on October seventh, twenty twenty five. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to adopt amendment to chapter thirty-two solid waste, article one in general, section one, polluting public places, subsection A to change violations of the ordinance from municipal civil infractions to misdemeanors by adding subsection C.
Support.
Comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, could I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Carter.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davy.
Yes.
Mayor Gillis.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harris.
Yes.
Councilman Bembas.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to item eleven C is to approve payment to Salski Construction for the Algenack Activity Center. The Algenack Activity Center general contractor, Salski Construction, has approved two invoices in the total of ninety-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars and ninety-one cents. Could I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve payment to Salski Construction, whose address is thirty-nine oh three Pine Grove Avenue in Fort Grashit, for work performed at the Algenack Activity Center in the total amount of ninety-one thousand, six hundred and eighty and ninety-one cents.
Support.
Comments, questions, concerns?
Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Yes.
I've added a few people. Is this money coming from the grant, the five hundred thousand dollar grant money? Mr. Chris.
Mrs. Chris.
Thank you, Mayor Gillis. Mayor Proton Davy, it could. The roof amount was like three hundred and fifty thousand.
Oh, okay.
So, we have that remaining balance.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, seeing none, could I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Proton Davy.
Yes.
Mayor Gillis.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harris.
Yes.
Councilman Bembas.
Yes.
Councilman Carter.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to item eleven D is to approve the water plant actuator replace phase number two. The continuous microfiltration actuator, CMF one, was replaced in twenty twenty four. The first phase was a test period before proceeding with phase two. The water plant is ready to proceed with phase two replacement of CMF two, three, and four. All the actuators are approximately twenty-five years old. The continuous microfiltration actuator uses a combined combination of compressed air, a pump, and membrane modules to continuously filter contaminants from water. Three hundred thousand was budgeted for this project based on prior contractor price to reduce what caused water plant staff to plan to perform most of the work. Completion is expected December twenty twenty five. With Algenack staff providing the labor, the estimated project cost is one hundred and seven thousand, three hundred dollars, located between Clay Township and Algenack. Sixty-nine thousand, ninety-eight dollars, forty-one cents for Clay Township, thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and one dollars, thirty-nine cents from Algenack. The estimate includes all materials, engineering services associated with this project. Design, construction, engineering, and the amount of seventy-five hundred were approved by city council on August nineteenth, twenty twenty five. This project was approved by the Clay Township Board on October fourteenth, twenty twenty five. Can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve purchase of valves, actuator, tubing, and fittings in the amount of seventy-eight thousand dollars from Corner Storm Controls, whose address is fourteen seventy-nine Keel Street, Plymouth, Michigan, four eight one seven zero, and purchase of positioner in the amount of thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars from Midwest Power Systems, whose address is two four zero one Hickory Oak, Milford, Michigan, four eight three eight zero, Engage Computer Program Integration Services from USISCADA, whose address is two two nine zero Bishop Circle East Dexter, Michigan, four eight one two zero, plus an additional five percent contingency of five thousand dollars for a total estimate project cost of ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Support.
Comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, could I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Gillis.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harris.
Yes.
Councilman Bembas.
Yes.
Councilman Carter.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davy.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item eleven E is to approve cleaning services for Algenack Activity Center. On October sixth, twenty twenty five, city council awarded the contract for cleaning services for the Algenack Activity Center to the lowest bidder, MC Shine Cleaning and Restoration, in the amount of forty-eight thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars and twenty-six cents. We have the invoice in the amount of forty-four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty-six cents. The final invoice is three thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars, less than the original bid amount. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve invoice for cleaning services for the Algenack Activity Center with MC Shine Cleaning and Restoration Service in Fort Grashit, Michigan, in the amount of forty-four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty-six cents.
Support.
Comments, questions, concerns?
Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Yes.
It just for, again, people who have asked. Can you get kind of like an idea of what cleaning and restoration is?
The chief down.
For the MC Shine, it was to remove all the mold. They cleaned all the walls, scrubbed the floors. All the ceiling tiles that were gone, that's all gone.
Okay.
And then they did floors again, and they disinfected them.
Thank you, I appreciate it, because there's been people who have asked. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? Seeing none, could I have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman Harris.
Yes.
Councilman Bembas.
Yes.
Councilman Carter.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davy.
Yes.
Mayor Gillis.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item eleven F is to approve water plant annual air compressor maintenance. The water plant has two Quincy air compressors essential for plant operations and the production of filtered purified water. Therefore, it is important to maintain a strict maintenance schedule biannually. Brehaup Corporation is the only authorized pro-service provider for Quincy compressors in Michigan and our current maintenance provider. It is recommended that Brehaup continue its service for the attached quote. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve biannual water plant air compressor annual maintenance service with Brehaup of Troy, Michigan, in the amount of eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
Support.
Comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, could I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Bembas.
Yes.
Councilman Carter.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davy.
Yes.
Mayor Gillis.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harris.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item eleven G is to approve water filter plant generator battery replacement. The generator at the water filtration plant requires a standby generator to be working in condition all times. The current batteries have been in place for eight years and are past their recommended life span. Rumenant's repair regularly maintains the generator and has recommended replacement. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve water filtration plant generator battery replacement from Rumenant's Repair, whose address is eighty-three twenty Broadbridge in Fairhaven, for the amount of one thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars and twenty-one cents.
Support.
Comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, could I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Carter.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davy.
Yes.
Mayor Gillis.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harris.
Yes.
Councilman Bembas.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to item eleven H is to approve the Algenack Clay Library Landscape Service. The Algenack Clay Library is requesting use funds for the library to hire a landscaper to pull weeds and clean the beds found around the line. Library sign flagpole and plant grass to make the area look neat and more attractive. The Algenack Clay Library Maintenance Agreement between Algenack Clay Township and the library states, any expenditures in excess of five hundred dollars must be approved by the respective governing bodies of the city and township prior to expenditure. Every year, the city and Clay Township DDA put five thousand dollars into a capital improvement fund for these kind of expenses. Currently, the account has a balance of sixty-seven thousand. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve Algenack Clay Library Landscape Services by D and E Landscaping and Grading Incorporated, of six two oh load plants between Michigan in the amount of one thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars and zero cents.
Support.
Comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, could I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Proton Davy.
Yes.
Mayor Gillis.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harris.
Yes.
Councilman Bembas.
Yes.
Councilman Carter.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item eleven I is to approve the South Water Municipal Utility Authority Board appointment. The South Water Municipal Utility Authority Authority Corporation approved by city council on October third, twenty twenty three, required Algenack and Clay and Ira Townships to form a board to oversee the administration of the authority. Each community appoints one trustee and one alternate. The Algenack Water Plant Superintendent was appointed by city council on July second, twenty twenty four, to serve a three-year term through June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven. A new board member is needed due to the recent resignation of the water plant superintendent. Charles Bailey has applied for the position as extensive utility experience. Alicia Bug, the city treasurer, is currently the alternate. Can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve Charles Bailey as the Algenack Board Member to the South Water Municipal Utility Authority Board for partial year term starting October twenty-first, twenty twenty five and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven.
Support.
Comments, questions, concerns?
I think Charles is a perfect person to pursue.
We are incredibly lucky that Mr. Bailey stepped up to do this, because again, like they say, there is no one better that I can think of to do this, and it is not going to be an easy job. But we were very lucky that he stepped up to do this.
I agree. Anyone else? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item eleven J is to approve full service supplementation subscription for city codes with Civic Plus, formerly Munenza Code. The city of Algenack, along with many municipalities, uses code service to print and maintain the city code ordinance online, which is available on the city website. The city has contracted with Munenza Code for many years, and in two thousand seventeen, had the city code ordinance recodified. Munenza Code prepares, publishes, and hosts the online code bank. Munenza Code Corporation was purchased by Civic Plus. The effective date of the subscription is November first, twenty twenty five. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the full service supplementation subscription for city codes with Civic Plus LLC, whose address is PO Box seven three seven three eleven, Dallas, Texas, in the amount of two thousand, three hundred and twenty hours and fifty cents.
Support.
Comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, could I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Gillis.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harris.
Yes.
Councilman Bembas.
Yes.
Councilman Carter.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davy.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item eleven K is to approve the annual workers' compensation audit. All municipalities are required to maintain workers' compensation insurance to cover employees in the event of a work-related injury or illness. Because the cost of this insurance is tied to the city's actual payroll and type of work performed, the insurance carrier conducts an annual audit after the policy year ends. The audit ensures the city premium actually reflects the true level of exposure during the year. The audit compares the payroll amounts that originally estimated at the start of the policy year to the actual payroll base. If the actual payroll is higher than estimated, the city will owe additional premium. If it is lower, a refund or credit may be issued. It's being requested that we approve the workers' compensation audit in the amount of seventeen hundred and eighty-five dollars. Can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve annual workers' compensation audit by Accident Fund Insurance Company of America in the amount of one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Support.
Comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, could I have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman Harris.
Yes.
Councilman Bembas.
Yes.
Councilman Carter.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davy.
Yes.
Mayor Gillis.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Accounts payable.
I'll make a motion to approve accounts payable and payroll in the amount of eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty-seven cents.
Support.
Comments, questions, concerns?
Tax things done, so you know what numbers are.
Where they been?
Hearing none, could I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Bembas.
Yes.
Councilman Carter.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davy.
Yes.
Mayor Gillis.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harris.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Items from Jackson agenda, Mrs. Chris and Kirk.
Thank you, Mayor Gillis. Right now, we have the community pool final payment and a possible resolution from SMOA that would allow them to start looking at bonds for future improvements at the wastewater treatment plant.
Thank you. Council comments, Councilman Bembas.
Well, just a couple of things. First, I hope we are able to work with Rose, she's such a great person, does a lot of great things for the city and the community. I just want to thank everybody, especially the fire department and DPW for helping Algenack. Turned out to be a very good event, the witches were awesome, as they are every year, and even got some good publicity on internet TV shows. So, thank you, everybody.
Councilman Carter?
That's it.
It's it.
Councilman Carter?
Thanks, everyone, for coming, and the witches were awesome, we had a great time. The whole out-hoarding of the neck was great, the music was good.
He spat himself on the back, right?
Yeah, don't break my arm. It was great to see everybody. The wind is starting to blow, and the leaves are starting to blow, and fall is coming. Have a, that's what I have.
Mayor Proton Davy?
Yeah, Halloween in the neck was fun, and the weather was awesome this time around. I want to address a couple of things that Mrs. Tesh had said again. First of all, we are not using Michigan Municipal League to do an executive search. All we're doing is putting the job posting on the MML. Number one. Number two, regarding SMOA, the city, that authority is completely separate from the city. We cannot tell them. We cannot expect them to give us everything. I've gone to a few SMOA meetings, and there's been a couple of times where I said, can I get a copy of that? I would have to foil that. So, this isn't something that we as a board, or as council, can approve or disapprove. They are a separate authority from council, they are separate from IRA, and they are separate from Clay. So, I wanted to clear that up. Okay, somebody, something's going to come down, like I believe that that's all I have. Yeah, which is kind of scary.
Councilwoman Harris.
I just want to thank everybody for coming. Halloween in the neck was a riot, the witches were awesome. We had a really good time. There was a lot of kids, and it was, it was good. There was spaghetti dinner from the Historical Society at St. Catherine's, five to seven on the twenty-eighth of October. And that's it, that's all I have, thanks for coming.
Alright. Halloween in the neck, as one said, was blast. One thing we started at Halloween in the neck was a costume swap table, and rather than it get put away, it's going to be out here in the vestibule until Halloween, so you could drop costumes off, you can pick costumes up. As long as city hall's open, there'll be a table out there with costumes in it. So, I think that's, we have got a lot of good feedback on that table.
Everyone was happy to reach the wings that she brought.
Palate maze was fantastic. Oh, I forgot. That's nice, I thought so, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. Halloween, speaking of pallet maze, when we burn the pallet maze on Halloween, five to seven, trunk or treat is going to be set up. five to seven, trunk or treat is going to be set up around Smithfield. If you don't get a lot of kids at your house, feel free to come on down, and we get tons of kids. And then at seven o'clock, we have the most famous hot dogs in Algenack, the Rover Club hot dogs, and then we have, then we have a big fire. Hopefully, we can have it this year, right, chief?
Chief, right, chief?
All right. I don't have anything else.
Wow.
Can we get a motion to adjourn?
Listen, because Jake and Mike are, wow. Support.
All in favor?
Stop.
Aye, 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 we are adjourned.